Are we recording? All right. Hey, welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 8. Welcome, everybody. Could we please have a roll call?
Chair Thomas.
Present.
Dr. Swisher.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
Commissioner Williamson.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Everyone is here.
Great, thank you. So let's start with to see if there's any public comments on matters not on the agenda tonight. Does anyone in the public that would like to say anything?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we'll move on to the planning director's report, please.
The Housing Steering Committee is going to be meeting this week on Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. And they'll be reviewing a first draft of objective design and development standards that a consultant has prepared for a city of Larkspur. And providing the staff with comments. So if anyone's interested in that, we posted the draft, the first draft on the with the agenda on the website and and the public's invited to attend the meeting. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you very much, Elise. And so now we'll move on to our public hearing portion of the meeting, and we have two items on the agenda. So let's start with 505 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Thomas. I'm going to do a screen share. I've got a presentation. Anyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. All right. So the first item on the agenda is a project at 505 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. This is a CUP, Conditionally Used Permit, number 2235. The applicant is requesting approval of the following permits, a conditionally used permit to operate a bank in an existing vacant commercial building in the C2 zoning district. Banks are and allowed conditional use. I've listed the permitted uses, what's permitted by right and C2. There's quite a hefty list of the allowed uses in C2. Banking institutions are allowed conditionally. Here's the aerial site view of the subject property on Sir Francis Drake. The subject lot is 13,786 square feet, developed with a 3,798 square foot two-story commercial building. It's located west of the Bonner Shopping Center on Sir Francis Drake. The main entrance of the building is accessed from a public right-of-way located off Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, with a second entrance in the existing parking lot at the rear of the building. There are 17 existing parking spaces, including one accessible stall adjacent to the rear entrance. In 2000, a conditionally used permit was approved for this location that permitted the operation of an outpatient medical facility. Prior to the year 2000, the site was used as a real estate office. So the proposed use would include a preferred banking office branch of the First Republic Bank. Operations and services provided differ from traditional bank uses in that there are no over-the-counter teller transactions. Services include personal finance consultations, which would be by appointment, and a walk-up ATM. The applicant intends to employ a maximum of six full-time employees and would have two private offices that would be utilized by visiting employees. Hours of operation would be from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturdays, close Sunday. The preferred banking office would be located on the ground floor, which is what you can see here on the right side of the screen. And the second floor would be used as general First Republic Bank office space and would not be part of the public-facing office. Sorry, this is a little blurry. I just went ahead and zoomed in on the available parking. We in our zoning code, we don't have an expressed parking formula for bank use. In the past, we have calculated bank uses the same as retail. However, given that the applicant has a their operation differs from a traditional bank, that they're not going to have over-the-teller transactions, which would be bringing people in like on that rotating basis like we see at other other banks, we have staff has decided to calculate parking as office and office use as there will only be six employees that would be taking all of the all of their clients by appointment only. With that being said, the applicant would actually have an excess of parking of one space, one excess parking space. So parking's not an issue with this conditional use. And also, there's no increase in PM peak traffic trips with this conditional use. And so with that, staff concludes that the findings can be made for the conditionally used permit and is recommending for this project for approval. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. That's that was great. Okay, do we have the applicant available to present?
I'm going to allow Oopsen to speak. I could miss them.
Hello?
Here we go. We can hear you now.
Oh, hi. Yes, I'm available to answer any questions, as well as Karina Wan, who is our director. So I'd be happy to, or either of us, to answer any questions. So yes, we're available.
Thank you. Do you have anything that you would like to add to the staff report?
No, I think Jackie did a terrific job. I think she shared all the information that we provided. I think we also had provided her and the planning department with a traffic report if should you guys would want some additional information supporting sort of, you know, we were quite careful to make sure that we were going to be making any conditions worse for the the very busy corridor. You know, it's a highly traveled day zone. So I think we had a successful report that sort of did confirm that our usage would not be increasing the load along that heavily traveled corridor. So yeah, other than that, I think everything else was was terrific that she presented for you guys.
Right, yes, that was included in the package. Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for either staff or the applicant?
No.
Nothing? Nothing? Okay. Do we have any comments from any members of the public?
Don't see any hands raised.
Okay, in that case, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. And if I can, Commissioner Wagstaff, if I could hear your comments on this, please.
This for me is a relatively easy one. I think I'm okay with what they're proposing and it sounds like they have plenty of parking, so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I'm in agreement with with Brock. Seems like there isn't an increased demand for parking and isn't an increased trip generation on Sir Francis Drake, so certainly seems reasonable to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Swisher.
I don't have any comments other than what, you know, Brock said and with with everybody else with Liam says. Yeah. You're next.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yep, no, nothing additional to add. Sounds good to me.
Okay, great, thank you. And from my perspective, I also think this one's fairly simple, just for the sake of keeping it on the record. It's clearly in line with the general plan, given that the banking was already mentioned in C2 as a conditional use. And it's clearly not, in my opinion, it's not detrimental to the to the to the to the area. So I can also make the findings. So I think if I think we need a motion. That's the bit we do next, right?
Right.
We've jumped straight to the vote. If someone can please make a motion.
All right, I move to approve use permit 22-35, 505 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard with the given can are there conditions of approval? With the
Yes. Oh, yeah, conditions in the staff report would be great. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
A motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, so we can
There's a 10-day appeal period.
Oh, yes. Thank you for mentioning that. We do forget that. Great, okay, we'll can move on to the second item in public hearing portion of the meeting. This is 8 Heather Way. It was continued from a prior meeting. And the applicants are back to with the, I think, revised drawing. So if we could please have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Thomas. I guess, as you mentioned, this is project for 8 Heather Way. It's design review, FAR exception, and a variance to the front yard setback, as well as a variance to lot coverage. The application number is 2213. This was first heard on September 27. And so the applicant is requesting the following permits to sorry, approval of the following permits for the proposed project at 8 Heather Way. Design review, floor area exception to increase the FAR on-site from 40% to 43%. A variance to allow excess lot coverage of 44%, where 40% is permitted by code, and a variance to reduce the required front yard setback from 20 feet to 16 feet. The subject property at 8 Heather Way is a 5,500-square-foot flat lot located on the northerly side of Heather Way and Heather Gardens neighborhood. These parcels are generally level. The homes typically consist of small cottages and bungalows on small lots. This lot, as originally approved, is subject to standard required setbacks for the R1 district and is currently developed with a non-conforming single-story single-family residence with a non-conforming accessory structure in the rear yard. The existing residence has an easterly wing with a non-conforming front yard setback of 16 feet and a westerly garage with a non-conforming side yard setback of 3 feet and 6 inches. The code states that any non-conforming structure may be expanded with a building permit, provided that no exacerbation of the existing nonconformity will occur and that the expansion meets all of the zoning regulations. If it does not, a variance application is required. So this proposed project would exacerbate the nonconforming front yard setback, as we saw on September 27 the previous design, which I've I've shown on the left side of the screen here. This was the previous proposal, would have required also a variance to the side yard setback. On the right side of the screen, you can see the adjustments that have been made to this addition, which eliminates the need for the side yard setback. All of the new construction would be in conformance with that 5-foot side yard setback. And that was following direction from the commission to really rethink the design and see if there was a way to eliminate the need for that side yard setback variance. Staff has made findings to support the variance to the front yard setback due to the special circumstances that have limited development on this lot. It is a smaller lot. It's certainly not one of the smallest in Heather Gardens, but it is smaller than what our requirement in the code is, which is 7,500 square feet. And it's already developed with into the front yard setback, as we can see on that westerly side of the home. It comes up into the front yard setback. This addition would just be meeting it there. It wouldn't be encroaching any further into the front yard setback. And it and something the applicants had shared with us at the previous hearing is that they really are trying to avoid building up. They like having a single-story residence. They weren't wanting to build a second story at this time. Right, so these drawings are both from the recent middle and show the floor plans existing and proposed for the addition. So the applicant is the reason for this addition is because they want to add a room for a playroom for their growing family. And in order to do that, they would like to convert their existing garage. But the code requires that they have one covered parking space, and they don't want to lose their garage. So they're proposing to rebuild the garage, which requires a small addition, close in the existing entryway. And here on the plans, you can see again how they've stepped the garage and they're stepping it into the existing living room area. That was a direction and comment that was provided to them at the previous hearing. And there have been no other significant changes, aside from stepping in that garage to eliminate the the need for the side yard setback. The propose, so and also while we're here, let's talk about floor area. So the floor area ratio describes the relationship between the total amount of usable floor area that a building has and the area of the lot. This proposed project would require floor area exception to allow for 43% FAR, where 40% is required by the code. FAR exceptions are not uncommon for projects in Heather Garden or in Larkspur in general. And an FAR study on residences within 300 feet of the subject site found that FAR in in that 300-foot radius ranged anywhere from 16% to 53%. So that is quite variable in the neighbor in the neighborhood, and 43% would be is on the on the lower side for some of those exceptions that we've seen. So this slide shows the existing and proposed lot coverage. Lot coverage describes the percentage of the lot that is covered by impervious surfaces or built structures. It's slightly different from the FAR in that there there FAR is going to count floor area at every level. You would expect that maybe on a single-story home, the floor area and lot coverage would be the same. The reason that they're not the same is because we count things like a front entryway would be counted against lot coverage, which is the reason why the lot coverage is slightly higher than the floor area ratio by enclosing this front entry. This would be included in lot coverage where it currently is not. The proposal would require a lot cover, a variance to lot coverage. The proposed building footprint would cover 44% of the lot, where 40% is established by code. Generally, homes in the Heather Gardens neighborhood have been remodeled without request for variance to lot coverage. And staff during research only found two instances where lot coverage variances were requested and approved, both of which were minor increases of only 1% to 2%. And as discussed in the previous hearing, the design could be modified to reduce the need for the lot coverage variance. However, the applicants did share that they really were not interested in building up. They wanted to keep this a single-story residence. So commissioners, you all discussed this, and we discussed this accessory structure in the back, which also is counting currently against their lot coverage. And the applicants also expressed that they, in the future, would like to convert the accessory structure to an additional dwelling unit. A little background on additional dwelling units and state law. ADUs are not subject to discretionary approval, which means that the if we can put in a condition for this applicant to demolish the existing accessory structure so they could meet the lot coverage, they could come in the very next day with plans to put the accessory structure back in, and they would be allowed to go over the lot coverage. We don't have the discretion to tell them they can't exceed lot coverage to create an additional dwelling unit. In light of that, commission gave direction that if if the applicants were to agree to convert their existing accessory structure in the rear to an additional dwelling unit, making it a housing unit, and that we could find make make the make the findings for the lot coverage variance on the grounds that additional lot coverage would be creating an additional housing unit, which is something that is in line with our goals as a city and also in line with state goals to just create more housing in in our in our communities. And so with all of that being said, staff has included a condition of approval that the applicant will apply for a building permit to convert the existing accessory structure into a legal ADU prior to or in tandem with the building permit for this project, should it be approved. This is something that I've spoken with applicants about. They understand they're in agreement, something that they want to do. I've also spoken with fire and building. They don't have any health or safety issues with this this accessory structure being converted. There would be some considerations that would have to be made, including sprinkling, putting sprinklers in the additional dwelling unit and some other fire-safe materials would be required for the roofs and and the walls, et cetera. Okay. With all of that being said, and the applicant has shown a good faith effort to modify their design to match direction given by the commission. And based on the modifications that they've provided, staff has been able to make the findings for design review, FAR exception and variances. Staff recommends approval for this project as conditioned. And as you all are discussing, I'm just going to go back to this first one, which shows the sketchup of the finished project. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
That's great, Jackie. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And I think the commissioners also appreciate your descriptions and detailed background about FAR lot coverage requirements for ADU and how how the how it fit into this project and the step-by-step detail. So thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Jackie?
I have a quick question. So I'm looking at the numbers, the floor area ratio exception. And we're talking about a 0.44 FAR. And and then the variance to allow coverage is also 44.44.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yeah.
There was a typo on the staff report. The FAR is 43%.
I've got that down, but if you subtract the ADU, it should be less than 0.01 in terms of area. In other words, the you're taking, what's the ADU size, 200 and something square feet?
230.
230.
Yeah, that's what I remember it was.
So that's like a 10% difference. I I'm just, I'm not, you know, it's not necessarily a big deal. I'm just trying to figure out the numbers because the FAR in the floor and the coverage should not be the same if we're getting an ADU.
Well, the ADU will still count against lot coverage and FAR. Only way that the ADU could be excluded from that would be if it met four-foot setbacks, and it doesn't where it sits. I think the point I was trying to make earlier is just that regardless of if we if we required them to remove the accessory structure, so they would not today be asking for the FAR exception and the lot coverage, they could come into building with a proposal to put in an ADU that would exceed FAR and exceed lot coverage, and we wouldn't have any discretion over that.
No, I understand that. Again, it's just, for me, it's just a numbers issue. I can't I can't make them work because anyway, it's it's okay.
Are you suggesting that the the point for the the FAR needed to happen, the ADU removed from that?
So ADUs do count in coverage, do they not? Isn't that coverage?
Both both floor, this say you would count towards both floor area and lot coverage. So they would be equal because there's a single-story development.
I thought that the FAR got subtracted out if you had an ADU.
Only only ones that meet the city's special requirement of four-foot side setbacks and 16-foot height limit. So yeah, that's the difference. Yeah. So if it if they moved it over, it would be excluded.
Yeah, that's okay. That's where I I didn't get that. And and I'm glad you put in that they, because there is a fire issue when you're on the property line. So anyway, okay, thank you.
So does this result in a legal ADU? Or is there still is it not legal because it doesn't conform with the setbacks?
It's legal. It's legal. It just doesn't qualify for the city's bonus floor area.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so all it does, it it becomes a proper ADU, but it doesn't give them the benefit of the deduction from FAR.
So they wouldn't be able to add more onto their house
Got it.
as they would if they if they had an ADU that was moved over.
Okay.
And presumably, the the city staff will make sure that, I mean, I don't know what's in that building because they didn't want to creep back there and look in, but you know, you need a bathroom and a kitchen and all that. So I don't know what's in there now, but there's a you got to get a sewer pipe if there isn't. So anyway, and I assume that's what they're proposing.
Or we'll we'll require that in order for them to build the proposed we'll need to we'll need to make sure that they've committed to doing the ADU before they get the permit to do the the proposed addition.
Right. So our understanding is to get the proposed addition, they have to commit to putting in a an ADU that has all the required, as you say, fire safety cooking facilities.
So if there's something more that you want for assurance about that, that's something that you could discuss with the commission tonight to add a condition of approval. Like for it to be installed prior to issuance of a building permit for the addition or anything else that would make it make you more assured that it was going to be installed.
Okay.
Elise, do you have any suggestions on what that might look like? Or I don't know if you're allowed to give us you know, something that is, I don't know if this has come up for in previous planning commission meetings.
It hasn't. I mean, there, I guess, one option, and maybe you can hear from the applicant, see if they have a suggestion. So one option would be to I mean, the alternative would be to require it to be demolished. Yeah, so it's and then they could come in for the same unit. So it's it's tricky.
I think we just need them to comply with whatever is required. It's just to have cooking and fire safety. That's all it is.
And to hold the permit for the ADU, it seems like there should be some step moving towards it because otherwise they could just complete the house part of the project and never complete the ADU. And that's the position that we wouldn't want to be in, either if you if it was important to your decision.
We hear you on that. That's great. Thank you. Shall we hear from the applicant? And then we can also discuss the project in light of the ADU questions as well. Maybe applicant or their architect.
All right, Jeff, I'm trying to promote you to be panelist. There you go.
Am I in the right spot?
You are. We can hear you.
Maybe I can address the the last issue first. I asked, first of all, thank you, Jackie, for a great staff report. I'm not sure I can add a whole lot, but I think what I had asked Jackie is to make a condition of approval that we would convert the accessory structure into an ADU. And obviously, that has to meet the fire safety Um, and obviously that has to meet the fire safety guidelines. And sort of Brock's question is that I'm sure that we're into a sewer ejector pump. It's somewhere to accommodate the the kitchen and bathroom uh, to facilitate that. Um, so our expectation is that, given this is a condition of approval, that when we submit a building permit application for the sort of garage addition, that we would also be submitting for our accessory dwelling unit. Um, uh, transformation, i- if you will.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
All right. So um, just to kind of to go back, uh, we did a a a number of things. One is I I went uh, back to the property instead of using the existing um, uh, as-built plans from the previous uh, addition application. Remeasured the um, accessory dwelling unit and the house. And we found a few feet of lot coverage that um, we could take advantage of. For instance, the new addition um uh, to the uh, house a few years ago, actually, um, if you notice in the in the back right corner was stepped back six inches, which we did not reflect on our original plan. So we saved some lot coverage there that was already existing. And then I remeasured the accessory structure of from the basically exterior siding and not the exterior trim and saved a couple of square feet there. And we also uh, eliminated lot coverage uh, by s- s- meeting the side setback requirement for the garage. Um, unfortunately, we made a small error in calculating lot coverage of some of the existing covered porch and had to add that back in. So it wasn't a huge change in uh, the lot coverage, unfortunately. Um, but uh, it it was, um, even though it was easy on paper, it's it's quite of um, exercise to encroach into the existing house, which is already twelve to eighteen inches above the garage slab to move the garage to the interior of the house. Um, because we had lost some uh, interior F A R to the garage incursion into the house, we extended the um, F A R out a little bit into the front entry area um, to try to compensate for that. So even though we took out F A R, we kind of added back a little F A R and but we equaled lot coverage in that regard. So it was just kind of a push pull of a lot of different things to make that work, to eliminate the side setback variance. Um, and um, there are a few other design issues that weren't as good as the first design, but uh, um, we're willing to try to a- accommodate uh, the request from the the commission at our last meeting. Um, so I think that's all I have to say in terms of the project. I think it's still pretty good. I think it's a very modest application. And um, I would encourage you to agree with staff and approve the application.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant's architect?
I I heard you say about a sewer rejection pump. I I I used to live on William and I remember in really rainy years, that place can really flood. So uh, does a sewer uh, enter, does it go posterior on the property or is it go anterior? Uh, the uh, sewer lines, just.
Exterior.
No, I mean, yeah, so it goes exterior, right? So there's that, there's there's a drainage ditch in the in the back of a lot of these houses that it's just a bad flooding area.
No, we 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 would be, um, we would be pumping to um, to Heather Way.
To Heather, right, right. That's what I thought. Okay. Thanks.
Any more questions? Um, do we have any other comments? I think there's just one other person in attendance.
Uh, there's no hands raised.
Okay. In that case, um, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Um. Commissioner Wagstaff, if you'd like to share your comments, please.
But what a surprise.
Right.
Um, I think with what they uh, with that clarification, um, I can support the project. I don't, I think the house is gonna look fine. Uh, the front yard setbacks on most of the houses are at sixteen feet, as I said the last time you were there. And um, I think uh, the A D U will be an asset to somebody, maybe them too. Um, and I appreciate they're doing it. So uh, my questions were all answered and I can support the project.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioner Campbell?
Um, yeah, I think uh, I think overall I can uh, support this too. I appreciate all the hard work that it takes to go back to the drawing board and address some of our comments. So I really appreciate that from the applicant. Um, floor area ratio and the front yard setback seem pretty consistent with the uh, with the neighborhood. Um, they fixed the side yard variance, which was, I think, probably our biggest concern last time, or my biggest concern. Um, and then I think the lot coverage variance, um, because they're putting in an A D U and we're getting a a housing unit out of that. Um, I I'm I'm comfortable with that. So I think uh, I appreciate, again, appreciate all the hard work that that um, applicant went through and uh, I'm in support of it.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Swisher?
I I like this project a lot. It's a really nice design. Um, I think it's aesthetically pleasing. I think they've done a good job with it. And as Liam said, and as Brock said, they worked to address our concerns, particularly about the sidewalk. So I am supporting this project.
Thank you. And finally, Commissioner Williamson.
Yeah, not not too much to add. I appreciate that the applicants were highly responsive um, and and took changes in stride and that they addressed all key concerns. So I'm supportive.
Great, thank you. Um, and I really have nothing else to add myself. Um, I'm also can make the findings here. Appreciate the efforts made by the applicant and the architect to comply with the local planning codes um, and make the changes requested. And um, I think we can, um, and and the A D U has also been addressed and it's a condition of approval. So we can maybe call that out in in whoever makes the motion. And maybe I can ask for a motion now, please.
Okay, um, I would move approval of design review twenty two thirteen eight Heather Way, including uh, floor area ratio, exception, setback variance and lot coverage variance. Um, understanding that the uh, A D U will be built also.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And can we please have a roll call?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Dr. Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Um, and where is my agenda? What did I do with my agenda? The next item, uh, we can move on to the business items. Um, the, if we can have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty five, unless anyone has any questions or comments.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, well, I wasn't here actually, I was at that meeting, so maybe I shouldn't do that.
I'll I'll make a motion to approve minutes of uh, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
And I think Max, you would be the only other person there, right?
Yep, I second.
Thank you. Um, do we need a roll call for this too or?
Why don't, why don't we just let you um, say aye if you're in favor of?
Okay, I.
Hi.
Hey.
And anyone opposed? And anyone abstaining? All right, thank you. The motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Um, and then do we have any planning commissioners' reports tonight?
Um, I think maybe um, Elise could um uh, say a little bit something about, I I guess the city council has met discussing the uh, the Commons Foundation Library and um, I don't know if there's anything additional to add to what was in the paper, but um.
Yeah, they're continuing to talk about the the city offices and where, um, and what to do with the city hall building. So I, the conversation isn't over. I think it's gonna be again on the agenda at the meeting that will be on November sixteenth before the city council. So um, I could, I could report back to if we hear more.
No, that would.
I was thinking you were bringing up the rent control issue, which that's actually been really interesting. So this, the planning committee, sorry, the city council has two ad hoc committees set up to talk about the poten- the potential for doing uh, rent stabilization for tenants in response to a number of Skylark tenants that had expressed concern because the Skylark apartment complex, which has four hundred and fifty apartment units, was purchased by Prime Residential and started raising rents. And they're also doing a number of improvements at the site. So the city council brought, took up the issue of looking into rent stabilization ordinances. And so there's an ad hoc committee of two members of the city council that are specifically looking at that issue and meeting together. And then there's another um, ad hoc committee of two other city council members that are looking into other assistance for renters such as um, maybe financial grants or um, essentially like a local section eight type of program. It might be something that they would consider, but any other options that might be of assistance to to tenants that are experiencing um, rent or housing instability due to rent increases. So um, at this time, the council hasn't made any decisions, um, but I can report back what if they decide to move forward on something too. They've had a number of meetings and all of them have been really well attended by renters that are in the city. So it, I encourage you to keep, keep up with it just because it's gonna be, um, it's it's just an interesting topic, especially as the city works on its housing element.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Um, do we want to discuss the meeting next week and just confirm we have a call?
Oh.
Who's gonna chair it?
Yes.
Who's gonna chair it?
Um, so there's three of you that can make um, the meeting next week, which would be great because we have a number of applications. And if we, if they don't go forward, then the December meeting starts getting really full with things that need to be processed. So um, if we have confirmation from Commissioner Wagstaff, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Williams to attend. And I think Commissioner Williamson, you have to attend by phone.
It's not next week. It's two weeks, right?
It's two weeks from now on the twenty second.
Good, because next week I'm not.
Sorry. Okay, no, that's two weeks on the twenty second. So that if that'd be great, if we could get the three there, we'll have a forum to get a couple of items um through. And then the next meeting would not be until December thirteenth. And that would be the only December meeting is the one on December thirteenth.
Okay, and then um, Brock, could, would you, would it would be the most suitable person, I think, to chair that meeting?
I I can probably work out something.
Liam and Max wanna.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be happy to share a script with for anyone if they feel like they're out of practice.
No, I I would be happy to chair.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and uh, what's the, the meeting in December is when?
December's, December thirteenth.
Because I'm um, I'm just getting back from Bali on the twelfth and.
Nope, don't put that on the video again. Now we have to edit.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay.
All right. Okay, so um, let us know if that's too much, if and you can't make it, just give us uh, give us a heads up. But I think we should be fine if you are unable to attend.
Maybe slightly jet lagged, which might be an asset.
And we'll send, um, yeah, hopefully we'll have time to get the plans. We'll send them. Obviously, they'll be available electronically, but you won't have the hard copy until you get back.
That's right. We we did the Bali edit last time.
Actually, we could tell you, and we could tell you what items will be going forward probably fairly soon.
That would be.
When, yeah, so you could maybe take a, take a look before you go or give, we can maybe get to the plans before you go.
I would find that helpful for the December meeting and maybe others might, if you, I mean, how many properties will be discussed at the next meeting in two weeks? Do we know yet? Is it more than two?
It's, Jackie, do you know how many that might be heard? Um, I think I have.
I have one.
Right, yeah, right now, we're trying to see who will be able to get story polls up in time. Um, I I know that Anna has at least one that will be going forward, possibly two. I was thinking she might be, I think she is trying to have two go forward.
Yeah, it's just, it's coming down to whether or not the applicants feel that they can get their story polls installed. Um, so we're waiting on confirmation from them.
All right, well, let us know once you know. Um.
And yeah, for December two, so we should know between the the ones that would be heard, um, anything that can't make it on November twenty second, they'll they'll be like, we're trying to limit it to four, but four that might be heard on December thirteenth that we can let you know which ones they are because they they already submitted the plans.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions before we adjourn? Nothing? Should we, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. Go to your.
Um, can we, can we all say aye for that too?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
It's switched a couple of times.
Definitely for adjourning, it's fine. I think for minutes, technically, we have to do a roll call, but I'm not too worried about the minutes.
Yeah, it's changed a couple of times since I've been on the commission, so um, okay.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for all your time.
Natasha. Commissioners, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
So um, as far as getting.